Good morning, Okaloosa County. Microphone, microphone. Good morning, Okaloosa County. Microphone, microphone. Welcome to the meeting of the Okaloosa County Board of Commissioners, Tuesday, April 1st. We'll begin this morning with an invocation led by Pastor John Reeves of Joy Fellowship Church in Crestview, and the Pledge of Allegiance, and the presentation of the colors by the Crestview Fire Department. Please stand.
Father, I just thank you, Lord, that we can come together today, that we live in a place that we can come and worship you, Lord, that our freedoms to come before you in this body and public are without fear of retribution. God, I thank you that we can express ourselves openly, but more importantly, we have the freedom to worship you. God, as each member of this board was elected, I pray that they never forget that all authority, all creativity comes from you. And so I ask that you bless them, God, as they seek you to represent this community. Lord, I thank you that as they go through their agenda items today and in the future, God, your wisdom is bestowed upon you. Your word says that if any lacks wisdom to let them ask, and you give it liberally. So I pray that they would seek you and that your wisdom be bestowed upon them. And Father, I just thank you again for everything that comes out of today's meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
April 1st. We'll begin this morning with an invocation led by Pastor John Reeves of Joy Fellowship Church in Crestview, and the Pledge of Allegiance, and the Presentation of the Colors by the Crestview Fire Department. Please stand.
Father, I just thank you, Lord, that we can come together today, that we live in a place that we can come and worship you, Lord, our freedoms to come before you in this body and public or without fear of retribution. God, I thank you that we can express ourselves openly, but more importantly, we have the freedom to worship you. God, as each member of this board was elected, I pray that they never forget that all authority, all creativity comes from you. And so I ask that you bless them, God, as they seek you to represent this community. Lord, I thank you that as they go through their agenda items today and in the future, God, your wisdom is bestowed upon you. Your word says that if any lacks wisdom to let them ask, and you give it liberally. So I pray that they would seek you and that your wisdom be bestowed upon them. And Father, I just thank you again for everything that comes out of today's meeting. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you know, we take time out during the year at certain times in our board meetings to recognize Oakliss County's most valuable asset, and that's our 1,100-plus employees here in Oakliss County. We do so at certain milestones in their career. We have several service awards this morning ranging from two years to 10 years. So when I call your name, if you'll please come forward and stand with me, and we'll get a group picture afterwards. First, I'd like to recognize Ed Vinson. Ed is the Communications Coordinator in the PIO office. This is his two-year service award. Next, I'd like to recognize Kevin Peck. Kevin is a wastewater operator A in the Water and Sewer Department. This is his two-year service award as well. Next, I'd like to recognize Elizabeth Massey. Elizabeth is an Executive Assistant II, also with the Water and Sewer Department. This is her two-year service. Next, I'd like to recognize Lacey Owens. Lacey is an Administrative Specialist, also with the Water and Sewer Department, and also this is her two-year service. Next, I'd like to call up Joshua Covington. Joshua is an Air Force Operations Coordinator, and this is his two-year service award as well. And lastly, with the 10-year service award, I'd like to ask Chris Anderson to come forward. Chris is a Mechanical Foreman with the Facility and Parks Maintenance Department.
Mr. Hofstadter, County Administrator, something?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just have a couple of updates for you this morning. I just want to remind the board that our next board meeting on the 15th of this month, that afternoon, we will have our Budget Policy Workshop. As you know, we kick off our budget each year usually in the month of April. That's our policy workshop where we set our budget policies and goals going forward for the year. So that'll be at 1:30 on the 15th. Lastly, we have consent agenda item, I believe it's number five, related to park fees. I just wanted to let the board know that to disregard some of the language in the agenda, the actual ordinance portion of it is correct, and we have changes to the larger picnic and sandcastle events are currently at $50. They're proposed to go to $30, and then the smaller picnic events and smaller sandcastle events are proposed to be $15. So everything is correct in the backup material. Just wanted to clarify that on the agenda item. That's all I have, sir.
Sir, thank you. Ms. Hoshihara?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no updates for today.
Clerk Inber.
Nothing from the clerk's office. Thank you.
At this time, we'll go into public comment. If I have your speaker card already, and you'll be called upon, you'll have up to three minutes to speak on any topic that you choose. If you still have a desire for public comment to speak, does that mean my time is up? Then please complete a speaker card, turn it in to Mr. Tomaczek in the back, and you'll be recognized at the public comment section at the end of the meeting. We'll begin with Timothy Dempsey. Mr. Dempsey, if you'll push the speak button, and then it will be ready. Thank you.
I want to thank you so much for letting me come up here. Down here from North Alabama, it's an honor to be here. I'd like everybody, if you would, at this time, use your imagination, look at a map of the United States, start at Kittery Main. Trace all the way down. You'll go by, of course, the Gulf of America. You go through the Panama Canal, and please end up at Seattle, Washington. What will you see all along that trip? Numerous warriors resting. What are those warriors? They're battleships, aircraft carriers, things of that nature. They're what made America great, with the ability to defend ourself. Nobody questions them being there. But if you go along that same route, what will you not see? You will not see one ship of peace. What is that going to say about us in the future when we're studied and it battleship, aircraft carrier, all that, which is great? I was in the Army 31 years. I loved having an aircraft carrier backing me up. But not having one ship of peace is going to be something that's going to be studied 100, 200 years from now. To make America great again, we have to save what made America great. I'm not questioning anybody's motives about the SS United States. I'm impassioned about it. I think you are also. But she is one of those very rare symbols of the United States at its very best. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Ted Corcoran.
Today, Commissioners, county staff, and interested citizens, Ted Corcoran here, not on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, but on behalf of myself, because I was reviewing the agenda last night, and there were three issues I wanted to share about. One, the excitement about naming the fairgrounds after Rigdon Center. It's fabulous, so I highly recommend you do that. Secondly, can you ever say enough things about Jason Autry? No, you cannot. So I request confirmation of him, and that, it's fantastic. And third would be the discussion on Craig Coffee under Department Business Request Consideration to Purchase Property at 326 Miracle Strip Parkway, formerly Red Lobster. You know, prior to this SS United States component here, I'd never heard of it. Actually, had never heard anything about this particular boat. I don't dive, so therefore, I really had no immediate interest in it. However, what I do have interest in is tourism, and this is going to be an amazing, an amazing addition for our community. I kind of associate it with the Titanic. It's our own little Titanic that we're having. So, and it was interesting, I did not know this, but the Titanic was actually 100 feet shorter than the SS United States, which I found out. And although very tragic in 1912 for the Titanic, the Titanic has become huge business in 2025. So therefore, let's talk about the Red Lobster location. The SS United States Museum, everything about it is perfect, the waterfront parking, et cetera. It's in Fort Walton Beach. It's connected to Liza Jackson Park, and the SS United States Museum will become a national, if not international, destination. The nearness to the Emerald Coast Science Center, two and a half miles, the nearness to the Intemmo Mountain Museum enhances each of those properties. So this is going to enhance all of the participation and visits to museums in our community. Therefore, perhaps, we may think about changing the Miracle Strip Parkway nickname to the Miracle Museum Parkway, something to consider. I am in full support of the Oakliss County purchasing the Red Lobster property. Thank you for the opportunity.
Leah Rollins?
It's on.
Oh, it's on, yay. Okay, hi, I'm Leah Rollins. I am the owner of Beach Vibes Picnic Company. I'm here today because I was made aware that there was an issue with the vending for on the beach, the beach picnic, sandcastles, and photography specifically. I've been a beach vendor for about, I think, two years now, two or three years. I bootstrapped it, so it was a little bit of, you know, of a climb to get here. But this year will be our fourth year in business. The reason I'm here is I was made aware last Thursday that this was going to be on the agenda, and I apologize for not coming sooner to the meetings because I think it is important for people in the community to be aware of what's going on before it affects them. So I think probably you'll see me more often here. The reason I'm here is, it says, "Two sandcastle vendors came forward and asked the county to look into equitable fee treatment of them as vendors as compared to other beach vending activities." As a beach vendor, I really haven't said much about beach vending fees. I just go about doing what I'm supposed to do, what I'm asked to do of the county. I am a beach vendor. I pay my fee, and I call in when I'm supposed to call and pay my fees and say when I'm supposed to be on the beach. The reason I'm here today is because I am one of three vendors that are listed for sandcastles. And last year, I did not see, and we get a list every month or bi-monthly, from the Parks Department saying who's vending on the beach. Last year, I printed off the list. I have it here with me if anybody wants to see it. There was not any sandcastles on that list whatsoever. Just three picnic companies. So I'm just wondering, the fair and equitable treatment of the vendors, I don't see any sandcastle vendors in the county as of this year on the list that I'm sent every month. So I guess why we're changing fees right now is probably my concern, and I'm just asking the county just to kind of look into it further and see, you know, the processes going forward. We're all small businesses, and usually it's just one person, marketing, tax person, social media, everything. So asking us to call in every single person that we see and every time is a little bit taxing on the person because we're on the beach doing the actual event, so we would have to hire staff, that sort of thing. Fees, they just get passed on to the consumer, right? If we're a business, to be honest, it's more of the, you know, the everyday processes that I'm concerned about. But I'm willing to have more conversation about it, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Jillian Harker?
I'm Jillian Harker, 163 Jones Road. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Mixon, for helping me with my FPL bill. I also wanted to say that I support the Annex Extension Office being named after Sheila Dunning. I've been privileged to volunteer with that program, and she was a wonderful woman and a huge asset to the community. Additionally, I support all the people that are talking to you about implementing the INSPIRE study. The growth on the north end is a lot, and we really don't have the infrastructure in place, and we really don't want the growth anyway. I love the farm-to-table life that my husband and I have built over the last 20 years. What I don't understand is why you have all these people talking to you about it, and yet the city of Crestview says you're partnering with them to build a 588-acre sports complex on the northwest side of Crestview. They'll be annexing county land to do it. This is especially confusing because just in the last week, I've seen your Facebook page announce two, maybe even three new parks on the north end. I'm not sure why you would help them pay for sports facilities that you are already providing. I'm all for them adding more ball fields and a swimming pool, but I don't want more hotels. I hope you will reconsider getting involved in this. Last, I'm asking for your assistance. We have formed a watch group in Crestview because there are things going on in the city government that we don't think are right. There's a lack of transparency, some stuff that we think might even be illegal, and we're reporting that to the state, but we could use your oversight. There are small insidious changes being made, like adding a new commissioner to the CRA board, and on their first day, voting to amend the charter and take more power away from the electorate. My point is, is that there's mistrust, and if you can't tell, I'm terrified of what speaking here today means for my family, but I am hoping and I'm begging that y'all will get involved however you can. I love this community, and I want the best for all of us. Thank you.
Heather Smallwood?
Good morning. My name is Heather Smallwood. I live at 6336 Possum Ridge Road. So you guys probably don't get this a lot, but I actually just came up here to say thank you. We were here in December, and the rezoning was denied, so our community would just like to say thank you. As you know, we have a lot of sharp turns on our road. I've already spoken to Chris Riles, who's the owner of that property that we were up against, and he said he will be coming back to try to do a rezone. I don't really know what that looks like. I don't know if you, Mr. Mixon, know anything about it yet, but I'm just here to remind you that our road does have very sharp turns. About a month ago, some guy ran into one of the signs, so this is another thank you because the roads department came out within like three days and fixed the sign for us, but it does happen quite frequently. So with 700 more homes, that would be probably happening a lot more frequently, and it was really scary. And everybody in the neighborhood heard the big crash in the middle of the night and ran out, and it happens a lot more than it should. So if we do have to come back here as a Possum Ridge community and go up against Mr. Riles again, I just wanted to remind you of my beautiful face because you'll see it a lot. And again, I just want to thank you guys, and that's it. And I hope you guys have a great day.
Thank you. Margaret Stewart?
Good morning.
I'm short. I want to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to speak. I am speaking in support of naming the South End Extension Office after Sheila Dunning. I would just remind the Commissioners that Sheila was a tireless educator. That was her main goal. She went above and beyond to train county, state, and the local municipalities when they needed their licenses. She never said no. When it came to school gardens, OTC with the UPS program, she never said no. That tree outside of this courthouse that had to be saved during the reconstruction, she said bad words, but she never said no. And I would like to let the Commissioners know that for the past five months, she never stopped, even while dealing with third-stage breast cancer. We can look at our Parks Veterans Park. We can look at the Environmental Center and see her fingerprint on it. At her celebration of life, we had people all the way from Gadsden County, South Carolina, South Florida, who came to honor her memory. And I would just ask this Commission to seriously consider and approve naming that building after her. She more than earned it. Thank you.
Frederick Barrow. Barrow or Baron? I'm sorry. Barrow.
Good morning. I appreciate your time here on behalf of the First Annual Baker Pro Rodeo. I'm from Jay, Florida. I'm the founder of the Ted May Arena there, where we host this year, this month, the 24th Annual Jay Pro Rodeo, Sandy Sanson Jay Pro Rodeo. And last year, we raised $138,000 for the kids of our community. It's an event that's not just about Jay kids. It's about all the kids in Central Rose County. We even give it over into Skamby County some. It's about all the kids in Center Rosa County. We even give it over into Skimby County some. And Mr. Sanson asked me, how can, when we, when we heard that the rodeo wasn't going to happen here in Baker this year, he said, "How can we help the kids in Okaloosa County?" And so I said, "We'll make it happen if we can." And so I called Matt and Polly Brunson, and we started putting together there with Baker High School. And so now we have the First Annual Sandy Sanson Baker Pro Rodeo. And Mr. Sanson's been generous enough. He says, "We're going to make it happen, regardless of two people show up or whatever. We're going, we're going to make this historic. We're going to make it great for the community." And, and, and so we got a lot of support so far. We've just put this together in the last few weeks when we heard it wasn't going to happen there. And we just, we're going to mold it just like we did in Jay. It's not just going to be about the Baker kids, it's going to be about the Crestview kids. Mr. Barnhill's here with me today, and he, he heavily supports some, some kid programs. We're going to support those programs. And so I just wanted you to know what we're doing here today. And also, this first annual is going to be historic if the Lord allows us to continue. And by your gracious, and we can continue this rodeo at that arena. We're going to honor Mr. Bill Barnhill for his lifetime of service that he has to this community. The arena is named after him, but he has a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that he's done throughout his lifetime. And we're going to present him with a plaque both nights of the event to honor him because that, that might not be there if it wasn't for him. And he's here with me today. And so we want to also invite any of you commissioners or any of the, those on this board to be with us in the arena as we honor him. I was talking to the, to the newspaper here yesterday, and they're going to do a write-up about him. And they said, "We want to honor him while he's living." You know, not when he was passed on. Everybody honors when they're passed on. And so we're going to honor him, and we will invite you to be with us during, during both nights of that arena. Mr. Sanson will be there as well, opening with prayer, and we're going to present him with that. And so I got a flyer for each of you and also have free tickets. Your names will be at the gate with you and your families. You can get in and get VIP parking. If you'd like to come, you'll be treated like kings and queens. And so is it okay to give y'all one of these? Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I may. I just want to say thank you for, for this wonderful cause that you're promoting. I probably will never go back to the Baker Arena when you're doing something because the last time I was there, I went into a major asthma attack because of all the horses and the cows and, but then the dust. But what I really want to say is that I'm so glad to see Mr. Barnhill here today. He is absolutely and should be recognized. One of the persons who is, his life has made such a difference in our community in Okaloosa County. Thank you for being here today.
Does anyone have any questions for me?
I wanted to say just a word. Thank you for putting this together. I've been in communication with Mr. Coffey a great deal about the concern over the Spanish Rail Rodeo and, and the inability to get that together somehow on the other end. And we, we look forward to their return. But I, I am so honored that this is happening in my district and for my district and in the, in the VARA Event Center. Mr. Barnhill, we've been friends for a long time. I'm so glad you're going to finally be recognized and honored for all you've done for the north end, for the rural culture and the, and the community up there. This is just a, a, a dream come true that would not have happened without the sponsorship, I'm, I'm sure, of Mr. Sanson. And the fact that it's able to help our children, our students, is something that Mr. Barnhill has championed and sponsored for such a very long time that it just seems like such a huge blessing in a time when we really had wondered what was going to happen with the rodeo. So thank you for pulling this together, and I look forward to helping sponsor it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of the privilege of Mr. Sanson. And I work for Mr. Sanson, and he is a wonderful guy, gives a lot to the community that people don't even know about. And just like Mr. Barnhill, that I, I've known him for, Neil Cobb was my step-grandfather. And a lot goes on behind the scenes of work that people don't know. And so thank you for honoring him. And any of you commissioners would be welcome to be in the arena as we honor him both nights of this event. All right. Thank you.
Commissioners, moving to the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull number four, please.
Is there a motion?
Motion for approval, minus four.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, second by Commissioner Palmer. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Ketchel, item four.
Thank you so much. I am, it is my honor and I'm so glad to see Margaret Stewart and some of the others here today to talk about Sheila Dunning, what a special person. She was a 22-year employee, is that correct? 22 years? I wanted to check that, but I'm pretty sure it was 22 years. Does anybody know?
22.
22. I was right. Yep. With Okaloosa County Extension Service, and she left this earth far too soon. She was revered by many individuals and organizations, including, I didn't hear you mention the DAR, who, I mean, I can't even talk about how many times she helped us for her extensive knowledge of horticulture and agriculture. Her fond nickname was Sheila Pedia because she knew the information that we needed about trees, plants, and produce without even looking it up. She just knew it. When Sheila died, a library was lost and volumes of wisdom and knowledge went with her. Rest in peace, Sheila. You're gone, but you'll never be forgotten. It is an honor for me today to make the motion to name the new South End Agricultural Building for Sheila Dunning. When I was chairman in 2017, the governor asked me what we needed most and what I wanted most. And it was this extension office because Hurricane Sally had destroyed what was left of a already rundown building in the south end. And we need this so much for education, for plants, for 4-H, just so many things. And I'm very excited that the master gardeners will have a place in the south end to work. It's almost finished, and we'll have a ribbon cutting soon. But it feels altogether right that we name this building as a place of learning and gathering for those who share her love of plants and gardening. And this be named for her, the Dunning, Sheila Dunning Building, and it will live on and she will live on forever in our memories. So with that, I make the motion for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Palmer. Just to remind you, commissioners, our policy with a honor posthumous within the first year, it requires a supermajority approval. And I don't believe that's a problem. Just wanted to be sure we all knew that. I'd like to say, Ms. Sheila, with her wealth of knowledge, has been to our home over the last 10 years, multiple times, different places we've lived to help my ignorance in some of the agriculture and horticulture ideas. And she would say, "No, you have to call somebody else. That is not for me." Or she would absolutely have the answer. Either way, she would always come back with the answer. And so her willingness and desire to help was huge, so much so that going into business young in the landscape business, it was important for, for me to push my kids in that direction to, to be in there. And so they would go sit down with Sheila, and she would give them instructions. And, and then on through, two of them getting their spray certifications and things underneath her training. Just the dedication that she had, fantastic. It is unfortunate, and we never understand the why, but I'm grateful for the, the time that we did have and for the opportunities that our counties had to be blessed by, by her dedication. So all in favor, signify with a "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. As we move away from the consent agenda, just want to point out, as commissioners, you know, but number three was dedicating the fairgrounds as the Rigdon Center. And just reaffirming what the city of Fort Walton did years ago, naming that after Bull Rigdon, and then utilizing it, even though we purchased that with no, no ties or responsibility there to the city to keep naming. However, what an honor. And Charles, I'm glad you're here with us today to be able to, to see us as a board move that through. And the place is looking great. So it's exciting to see our tourism dollars at work and to know a glimpse of what is to come from that. But it never would have been, had your dad not had a vision and the opportunity to carry through that vision. So thank you.
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's nice to see you here today, Charles Rigdon. And as you know, Terry and I go way back with your family. And we were with you all the night your father passed. So this is really nice that we're going to be calling this the Rigdon Fairgrounds forever. So thank you. I'm so glad you're here and glad you brought your friends with you. God bless you all.
Yes, sir.
First of all, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for this honor. You know, my dad, he came from humble upbringing. I think he told me he was born in 1929, so he was raised during the Depression. My grandfather was on a bridge building crew, and he moved 17 times in 12 years. Never really had a place that he called home. And when him and my mother moved to Fort Walton Beach in 1956, he found his home, and he never moved again. And he would be honored today. I know my family is. It's a little emotional for me. You know, when you get older, you get emotional. But we're entirely grateful. He, he thought of Okaloosa County and the people of it like his family. And, and I think he left it a little better than he found it. We certainly appreciate it, and we'll do anything we can do to help going forward. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Department Business, Mr. Hackett.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to request authorization for staff in the county's financial advisor, Hilltop Securities, to produce documents and reports necessary for us to refinance our 2015 revenue bonds for water and sewer. Those bonds are set to retire in 2035. I want to emphasize that this is not new debt. We're simply exercising a callable option within the existing bond to refinance at a lower rate without changing the terms to, to get hopefully around $260,000 a year in debt service savings or 2.6 million over the 10-year period. We have here today Joel Tyndall. He's Managing Director for Hilltop Securities, and he's here to present a preliminary financing analysis. Joel.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Joel Tyndall with Hilltop Securities. We serve as the county's financial advisor. I'll kind of walk you through this presentation if we are able to bring it up. Great. So moving, just give you a kind of a brief market update as of March 21st, just to give you a little background in, in the market. So this chart right here shows you over the last 12-plus years, interest rates, both tax-exempt benchmarks, taxable benchmarks, and short-term interest rates. You can see the markets kind of fluctuated over that period of time. In the wake of the pandemic, in 2020, interest rates obviously dropped significantly. And as a lot of us know, interest rates have increased over the last few years as we've seen inflationary pressures for a number of reasons. More recently, if you look at that yellow line, just to point out, short-term interest rates have come down just a little bit towards the end of last year as the Fed has started its rate-cutting cycle. But just zooming out on this chart a little bit, you can see that the rates are not at the top levels during that period, but they're certainly not at the low levels during that period. And the table at the bottom, you can see both the current, the minimum and the maximum, the average. And so the current, under both tax-exempt taxable and short-term interest rates are, are not, are not at the maximum, but they're above the average currently. So it's just a overview of some of major benchmarks in our industry. This following slide, this shows you two indices that we look at in the municipal market, the bond buyer, GO, and revenue index. And there's a dotted line for each one of these graphs, which shows the average over that period. So you can see, again, we're a little bit above the average here, but we're certainly not at the maximum during this 12-plus-year period in the municipal market in terms of these averages. This next chart, if you really zoom out to get an idea of where we are from an interest rate standpoint, this goes back over 30 years. So these gray bars show you municipal benchmark interest rates for one through 30-year maturities, the range it's been for that 30-plus-year period since 1993. You can see the blue line, which is the, the current rate as of March 21st of current yield curve, as well as the average. So if you really zoom out, even though people think the interest rates have really gone up, which they have in the last few years, if you look back longer term historically in this 30-plus-year period, we're really closer to the average right now. In terms of the refunding plan that was mentioned a moment ago, so the county does not currently anticipate additional financing needs for the water and sewer utility system in the near term. However, the county has approximately 40 million of outstanding 2015 water and sewer bonds outstanding. 36 million of these can be prepaid or called without penalty starting in July. They have rates, interest rates ranging from 3.75% to 5% and mature through 2036. So the county has an opportunity to refund a portion, all our portion of these for savings based upon current market rates. And as of March 25th, we've estimated refunding of the callable bonds is estimated to produce net present value savings of approximately 2.3 million or 6% of the farm out of bonds refunded. Again, we don't expect to change the final maturity, just keep the same final repayment term. And we also expect to keep the same security pledge, which is effectively the net revenues of the water and sewer system for the new bonds. Turning to the summary, this slide shows you really a snapshot in time based on interest rates as of March 25th and what the refinancing would look like. So in terms of your repayments, you can see on the top right in that graph, the dark blue bar, which is your existing payments, and the light blue bar, which would be your new payments under a refunding or refinancing. Again, down on the left and in the light blue, the net present value savings based on rates as of March 25th is estimated to produce present value savings of 2.3 million or 6.4% of bonds refunded. In our industry, we really like to see for a current refunding somewhere in the 3% to 5% plus range. And obviously, 3% is ideally at least a floor. So based on March 25th rates, the estimated savings is certainly above that level. The borrowing rate or the effective rate, all in interest costs, is about three, was about 3.56% on this preliminary analysis. And that compares to an average coupon refunded of about 4.76%. So you're dropping the interest rate over a point on this. Now, it takes a little while to put the financing together and ultimately get to market. So what happens if interest rates change? So over on the right-hand side, we've provided some sensitivity to the interest rates moving. So at market, which is basically the March 25th interest rates, you can see again the 2.3 million and 6.4%. But what happens if interest rates go up a half a percent or 50 basis points or down a quarter of a percent or 25 basis points? And so that gives you an idea of the net present value savings changing depending on where the market is at the time you get to market. So even with a 50 basis point or half a percent increase, you're still looking at savings of 1.3 million or 3.7% say, net present value savings, which is above that kind of 3% threshold I was mentioning. In terms of, the financing team will consist of certainly the county staff, bond counsel and disclosure counsel, to his neighbors, Giblin and Nickerson, ourselves as financial advisor. Typically, for utility bond issue, you'll have a consulting engineer to prepare a report in connection with the offering. And then eventually, there'll be a bond underwriter that will essentially purchase the bonds for resale to the team investors. In terms of the schedule, what we're looking at here is we're presenting the financing plan to you all today. Assuming approval to proceed with the financing plan, we, the financing team would start preparing the documentation. We'd work through the credit rating process. Tentatively, we'd be looking to come back to you all for approval of the actual financing documents in June and then go to market and close in July. So the bond sale, we show that as July seventh there. That is really the date that you lock in the interest rate. So until you get to that point, you're really subject to market conditions. But we would likely be presenting some approval with some parameter for minimum savings, potentially three percent when we come back to you. That's overview of the water and sewer utility financing. If you happen to answer any questions you all have. Thank you.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes, sir. We talked about this a little bit over the phone and I appreciate your time in that very, very much. But I just want, because the market has been so crazy, you know, over the last four years especially, that there are unprecedented, you know, changes sometimes. And I know I had the commitment from you that that this is still all the numbers that you've laid out here, although there is some busts, it's varied in those numbers, it's still representing the, you know, the three percent, you know, threshold. I just, I would feel more comfortable if we have a commitment from you that if something were to happen and it is unprecedented changes and those fall outside of this, you know, potentially, you know, delivering different results, that you and your team will revisit this before, before presenting it to us. For example, if on July fifth, you know, we're about to ink that decision and the market has gone nuts, you know, delivering unprecedented, you know, exponentially worse scenarios, that you'll revisit this for us so that we can make a better, you know, decision.
Absolutely. We'll likely have a parameter when we ultimately get it approved, but we'll certainly keep monitoring market conditions. We're not going to want to proceed if you're not going to get economic savings and benefit from this transaction. This is a refinancing, so ultimately the goal is to save money. And if you don't do it or don't save enough, we won't proceed forward.
Okay, great. That's all the comfort I needed. Thank you.
Commissioner Ketch.
So I'll make a motion to proceed with this, but I have a question probably from Mr. Hackett, that of the 1.3 million perhaps savings, will that be reinvested or will it go through to the citizens? How do you plan this? What do you plan to do with the savings?
It will essentially just help in terms of our existing debt service. We we just in the consent package, we had our new, our existing rate consultant, Stan Tech, approved again. They'll put everything for our budget into their model and they'll rerun it and to make sure that we retain solvency. And so we have plenty of projects and plenty of needs that this can go to. I can't say for sure that it would result in a, in a decrease in rates, but it certainly goes back to the public and our customers in terms of maintaining the system.
Right. So my softball question really, because you weren't here. One of the things that I was really tickled with, we didn't raise rates because we were able to continue a steady. So do you see an increase any time?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm, that was my softball. So thank you. You, I mean, you all run a great department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. No, we don't see anything. This just helps our position and we'll be watching the market if it doesn't come in.
Right. That was a good point she made because volatility.
We can wait and until it does come around.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox. So my motion stands.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Palmer. Mr. Hackett, with this being an enterprise fund, thank you for the way that you're operating this enterprise. I need to remind folks that an enterprise fund is, is still government dollars, but it's paid for service. And so it allows this department to cover the expenses of this department. And so that's running in a good fashion. I'm really in favor of the idea of saving 1.3 million dollars. I'm not a rate payer. Of course, some of my family is in other parts of the county, but I am not. I would, Commissioner Ketchell, I was concerned that we have the opportunity to put savings into debt service. I would like to make that a suggestion, not a requirement. If we're able to, great. I know in the past it has afforded us the opportunity of doing some, or not doing some increases. I would like for us to be able to balance that as each situation comes, because I don't want us to find ourselves not doing an increase because we're paying interest on money. And so we'll see where, where that allows us in the future. Mr. Tyndall, thank you for being keenly aware of the rate changes and working in our best interest. I look forward to having you come back in, in June and then talking with you prior to the closing to make sure that we're on good track to save this much over the course of time, because it does go into a great, great service that Mr. Hackett's department and teams is providing. Are there any other comments? All in favor, signify with a I. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Autry, our Public Works Director.
Jason Autry, Public Works. Following up on that conversation we just had regarding the water and sewer bond financing, as this board is aware, we are moving into an era, we have some facilities we need to construct. One of them is a tax collector's facility. Another one is a relocation of the Public Works facility to co-mingle with growth management, as well as the potential remodeling of the Bracken Building once the tax collector moves out. As we look forward to those capital investments, the other piece of it was much like water and sewer, there's some existing bonds that are out there. And if we're going to be into the bond market, then again, we could have a little bit of savings, we could add into some existing debt that we have. With that, I've got Joel Tyndall again here with us to go over this, this aspect of the bond, bond request for the board for our capital elements. Joel.
Thank you and good morning again. Again, Joel Tyndall with Hilltop Securities. We serve as the county's financial advisor. Won't spend too much time on the market update again, as we just discussed that a few moments ago. So I'll go ahead and move through to the capital improvement financing discussion. So the county has three capital projects that anticipates financing in the near term totaling forty-eight million, as you can see in the table. Includes the tax collector, Bracken renovation and the public works projects. Proposed financing for these projects is anticipated to be a single or a combined bond issue repaid over approximately thirty years. As was mentioned, the county also has about fourteen million dollars of outstanding sales tax revenue bonds that can be called without penalty currently. And those bonds have rates, interest rates ranging from 3.6 to five percent maturing through 2034. So refunding of all our portion of these bonds could provide some debt service savings to the county based upon current market conditions. And then combining the financing of the new money or the new projects mentioned above, along with the refunding can provide some economies of scale such as closing costs related to financing. We anticipate the bonds to be secured by coming in to budget appropriate from legally available non-alcoholic revenues of the county. This provides a strong security pledge and allows the county to use various funding sources to fund the repayment of portions of the bonds, including excess fees from the tax collector related to that project. This next slide provides you kind of a snapshot of the financing plan, preliminary financing plan as of March twenty-fifth. So as you can see up on the top right, that's the sources and uses. You can see the uses of funds for the new money, including approximately forty-eight million for the projects mentioned. On the refunding side of ledger, you've got a deposit to the refunding escrow, so that's refunding or repaying the 2014 sales tax bonds. And then in total, the principal or par amount of the financing is, was estimated to be about fifty-seven and a half million as of March twenty-fifth. And in terms of the structure, you can see down on the bottom left, the repayment structure, the dark blue line, which is financing the new capital projects. It's repaid roughly equal annual basis over approximately thirty years. And then on the refinancing or refunding, you can see the light blue bar. So we're not looking to extend the final maturity or extend the total repayment term. We would just be looking to lower the debt service and on that refinancing if market conditions allow at the time of sale. Looking over to the bottom right in terms of some statistics, so the overall borrowing cost as of the twenty-fifth was estimated to be about 4.4 percent in terms of the all-in TIC. That equates to total interest of forty-seven million and total debt service of about a hundred and five million over the life of the financing. If you just focus on the refinancing portion of the 2014 sales tax funds mentioned, by refinancing about thirteen million of bonds that produces or was estimated to produce annual savings from twenty-six to thirty-four of about eighty-three thousand or net present value savings of over six hundred thousand, equating to net present value savings of about 5.1 percent of the principal amount or par amount of bonds refunded. So again, over the three percent threshold, but we would continue to monitor that as we, as we, as we get closer to the actual pricing. From a team standpoint, similar team, as we mentioned before, although this is more of a governmental type financing versus utility or enterprise financing, we probably wouldn't have the engineer, same engineer type reporting involved. And then in terms of the schedule, we would be looking for a similar schedule as the utility financing, presenting the plan for approval to proceed with the financing plan today. And ultimately coming back to the board in June and trying to go to market in July, obviously market conditions, subject to market conditions. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tyndall. Missers. A motion by Commissioner Palmer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ketchell. Any further discussion? Grateful for the way that the different entities of our county work together. It's, it says a lot about our county to see the different constitutional officers, to see the different operations. Because really it divides out into a lot of different pots of funding to be able to come to meet the needs that we have as a county. And so to me, that is an exciting element of this that makes us stand apart from others in the opportunity of being able to come and problem solve and to do it as a team, even though there's a lot of different independent values there, but we can still, still bring it together. There's no other comments. All in favor, signify with a I. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Autry. Thank you, Mr. Tyndall. Ms. Kelly Burden.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. On February eighteenth, the board approved a new organizational chart for the county aimed at enhancing internal efficiencies within the organization. And this reorganization included the establishment of a deputy director of development services position, which will oversee the growth management, public works and water and sewer departments. It is my great honor to bring this item to you, the county administrator's recommendation of the appointment of Mr. Jason Autry as the deputy county administrator for development services. Mr. Autry has dedicated the past two decades to serving Oakliss County as the public works director, a role in which he's been responsible for a wide range of functions from engineering, road maintenance, fleet operations, surveying, ceded control, solid waste, environmental services, traffic operations and capital improvements. Before his tenure in local government, he was employed in the private sector as an engineer specializing in development services. Mr. Autry possesses a bachelor's degree, Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering from the University of Florida. Furthermore, he is recognized as a professional engineer in the state of Florida and has obtained his certified public manager certification. On a personal level, Jason stands out among his peers, often mentoring and offering sound advice to many of us, which I've been the recipient of that. And it is my great honor to bring the county administrator's recommendations.
Thank you.
It will be my honor to offer this motion. I can't say enough about Mr. Autry. I don't even know what our county would be like without you.
Quieter.
Well, that's true. You're just always available. It doesn't matter whether it's the weekend or the weekday. You've always answered my questions so thoroughly and you have a great team behind you. So it is my honor to recommend you for this position.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Palmer. Any further discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason, I'll be honest with you, I was on the fence. Fortunately, Kelly reminded me you are a gator. So that pushes you over and you got my support. So.
I'll take what I can get.
No, in all seriousness, I actually look forward to the opportunity. Both of having you in this role and the administrator's vision in kind of reconfiguring some of our administrative framework. Because I think what this is really going to do is give an opportunity to try to pull together three different departments that are all critical when it comes to development, land use, permitting, things of that nature. Of course, I'm talking about public works, growth management and water and sewer. And I think you've got an excellent opportunity to work on streamlining processes and making things more efficient, not only for intergovernment, so that between the departments, things work fluidly. I think it'll also help our citizens. So I'm real excited about the opportunity. I know you're, I know you're equally excited. I just feel confident. I haven't worked with you for the past ten, eleven years that I've been here. And so, you know, congratulations and thanks. So now get to work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cox.
I just wanted to say that this is the great, this seems like, you know, all the pieces coming together. You know, Jason unfortunately inherited me as his first committee chair commissioner since my term. I mean, I signed up to have Jason because he's been mentoring me before, during and after. And I anticipate that moving forward. As somebody who has been very, very careful about the kind of projects I've built in my life and overseen the building of. It's the Jasons of the world who make those beautiful. You know, it's the Jasons of the world who make sure that those projects work, you know, competitively, compatibly with the people who live there, so that our county is always a great thing to live in. And I anticipate many years of that moving forward. Thank you so much for accepting this, this title. And, and Mr. Haas said, thank you for making this happen.
Thank you, Commissioners. And you know, one of the, one of the greatest joys of my almost forty years in local government is being able to, to find talent within an organization and elevate that talent where they can succeed. This is one of those examples. I was a public works director in 2010, was fortunate to step into this role in 2014. My first appointment when I moved in this role was to make Jason the public works director. And he's done an outstanding job. So thank you for that. I wish I had the same opportunity to choose my neighbors, but I don't. But anyway, I know you'll do a great work, Jason, and we're proud to have you in this role. So thank you.
Thank you. I do want to thank you all, all the Commissioners for all the support. I do want to be available, not just for you, but for the citizens. I also want to take a moment to thank my wife, Amanda. Best thing that has ever happened to me and I cannot thank her enough. So sweetie, love you. Thank you for being here. And I do enjoy working with the people in Oakliss County. The tax collector's office has been great to work with, working with all the constitutional offices. And then, of course, the staff at Public Works. I'm just a guy that shows up with great people around him. I'm so fortunate and blessed to have that. And I appreciate this. I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve the county.
Don't go quick. We hadn't voted yet.
God willing. I got one. Trey said he's a gator, so we're good there. And I will want to save this recording to prove to my parents that it's real.
That's right. All in favor, signify with a I. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Camper.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have one item from growth management on today's agenda, which is we're asking for the board to authorize code enforcement and the county attorney's office to move forward on the foreclosure of a property shown on the screen there, thirty-six twenty-one Grady Johnson Road. This is a very necessary case for code enforcement. As you can see in the staff report, this issue has gone on for a long time. We work with a succession of people who have claimed to have been in charge of the property following the passing of its last known owner. And we believe it's appropriate time, as you can see in the photographs, parts of the structure have been removed presumably for scrapping. We've had problems with vehicles. We've had problems with trailers showing up, people staying in trailers outside of it, properties and campers junk. It's just time to move forward so we can get this property foreclosed, we can clean it up. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, this is in my district. Commissioners, this is in my district. Say it with unique articulation. Unfortunately, in support of this, it is not an aspect that take joy in having to do, but it is a necessary function of essential government. And keeping quality of life up and health, health issues. And taken care of, so. Is there a motion? Commissioner Palmer. Second by Commissioner Goodwin. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I was sad. And I think as you pointed out, you know, this is, this is really one of those things that's, that's, you know, reserved for the most egregious necessary instances. And so. Never take it lightly to do something like this. And you know, I think it's something we exercise with extreme caution, and that's why you don't see it. You know, foreclosure like this regularly on the, on the agenda, but, but it is, I think it's an extreme measure, an extreme remedy. But sometimes the situations require it. So I just wanted to speak to that. Thank you.
Mr. Camper, what was the original date that we began interactions?
October, actually, the very first call was August of twenty eighteen.
Right.
Yeah.
Question.
Commissioner Cox.
Can you elaborate for me? I'm, I'm sure there has been, because there are many visits so far, so that's already a use of, you know, public tax dollars and just having you and your, your staff out there. But. Can you tell me sort of a, just a brief synopsis of like the, the effort that's been made to, to contact. You know, the heirs or the, the, the natural owners of the property after the deceased owners of the property. I mean, if there's been law enforcement, you know, called to, to discipline the area or. Or, I mean, what, what caused this to come to pass?
What originally, what originally happened was, well, to kind of roll back all the way, the property, the immediate prior owner had passed and inherited, was inherited by. The last known owner who subsequently had health problems and health issues. While the first code enforcement complaint came in, we attempted to work with that owner and various volunteers who had stepped up to say, we're going to help. None of that worked very well. People show up, work for day and sometimes leave it worse than they started. And then the owner ended up in a, in a nursing home facility and subsequently passed. And there's been, you know, property's not been gone through probate. There's no heir has been identified. They've been fighting over it. In an effort to track that down, we actually routinely contact law enforcement, contact the jail system. Because sometimes some of our clients are, you know, they can't respond because they're incarcerated. And we sometimes get involved, you know, unfortunately where you have family members fighting over it. So we have dealt with, you know, one of the. Related descendants of the, of the deceased owner, trying to figure out, okay, where are you at in this process? The attorney's office has gone through the court records to see if there's been any filings, motions. We just simply haven't been able to track anybody responsible down for this property.
I understand. I think that clears up any, any misgivings I might have had. Thank you.
Mr. Camper, if it's okay, in the future, would you just add a timeline? Sure. To the packet that'll, that'll help a bit to see the interactions. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with I. Any opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Coffee.
Morning Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present another opportunity to acquire some waterfront property as part of our longer term efforts to. Essentially expand our offerings on the water and to fulfill the tourism requests that we see constantly. This particular property, I'll just go over it with you and familiarize you. It is near a bunch of museums, as Mr. Cochran has explained earlier. It is in a great location and a highly traveled street, lots of traffic going by. This is kind of what looks blown up next to Liza Jackson Park. It is Liza Jackson Park, as you may or may not know, is undergoing a major renovation. So that's exciting as well. This has great zoning. It's a mixed use district, and that's kind of what it looks like on the ground over a hundred parking spots. And there's a picture of it. It's in relatively good shape, even though it's an older building. It's been well maintained and kept, kept up well. Obviously, it was in business as a restaurant some two years ago. From a zoning standpoint, there are no wetlands per se. Flood plain, the building is out of the flood, it's flinched over to X, it's out of the flood plain. Some of the site parking potentially could flood during a major hurricane event. There's a survey, kind of bust through this. These are the kind of the facts, the rundown. It's one point eight four acres, under fifty foot of waterfront inch. Over a hundred parking spaces. I won't bore you with all that, but if there's any questions, it was appraised. It was sold for three point four three million in two thousand twenty three. And recently, our appraisal coming back at three million seven hundred and fifty thousand, so even more than what we've offered. We've settled on a price of three point five million. If you were to replace this building, it'd be well over six million with the building and improvements, parking lot improvements exclusive of the property, so. There are a lot of property, potential uses of this property. First and foremost, we think a museum would be ideal. Although that is part of our ongoing discussions with the conservancy and that's, those are going to progress a lot more this month and the coming months. Obviously, Little Ventures, Demonstration Kitchen, Small Charter Hub, a lot of different partnerships we can entertain with Liza Jackson Park. And even a smaller event space. This is the requested funding. We added money in there for master planning because we think we'll be in that mode here shortly, hopefully with the museum. If not, we'll go on to Plan B. Outside of that, if there's any immediate repairs that we anticipate as we do our due diligence, whether that's be HVAC roof repairs. Anything else to make sure the building stabilizes and stuff while we prepare for the reuse. Any reuse plans will be brought back before this board for your approval and before we proceed. And these dollars don't include any design or construction for dockage or reuse development. There's very little grass out there, seagrass. Which is also good for our dockage and stuff. We ran into seagrass issues with other parks and stuff we worked on, so. I went through that fast. I think you guys are very familiar with it. I'll entertain any questions, though, that you may have or.
Commissioners. Mr. Goodwin.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to move forward on this. See if I get a second.
I'll second. I'm very excited about that option.
And I'll just say, I think this is a great opportunity, you know, with this particular piece of property right next to, as, as Mr. Coffee pointed out. The city's park there at Liza Jackson. I know that we're already participating with the city. In some of their efforts to revitalize that, that park and kind of reconfigure it. And so I think it's a really great. A great opportunity to continue to, to serve the tourism function, which it'll do. But I also think it'll provide an amenity for locals to enjoy as well. And so I think it's a real win in that, in that regard. You know, and to the extent that there's, you know, you know, some concern that this is, you know. Necessarily inextricably intertwined with the SS United States. You know, certainly understand the discussion in that regard, and I think it create a great opportunity for a museum that may or may not be related to that. But even if we weren't pursuing that, you know, that artificial reef program. I think this is still a wise move. Particularly when we can leverage the, the taxes that are generated or the, the revenues that are generated from our visitors. And so if I understand this, you know, correctly, I mean largely or exclusively, this is going to be borne out by. You know, those, those, those amounts paid in by people who are not the property taxpayers here, because it's from the, the bed tax. And so. I think it's just a really good use of those funds that will, that will accomplish both purposes, both serving our, our visitors and serving our residents. And so I think it's a great opportunity. And the, the location is, for me, significant in, in selecting this as an, as, as a project we'd want to move forward with. So. Appreciate your effort and Jennifer's team's effort and looking at this and everybody else that's involved and just look forward as we move, as we move on with it. So, thanks.
Mr. Ketchel.
I just want to add that I, I've always loved this location and wondered about a restaurant there, but the beautiful park that's next door that's going to be renovated. I was down there the other day actually for a reason. And, and it's just going to, if we. If the ship is actually sunk, and I feel bad for Mr. Dempsey, he comes here, he talks about it, and all the people that we hear from that are pro and con. It's a great way to memorialize this beautiful ship that we all watched go across the water. I could only imagine the majesty of it when it actually was functioning as a passenger ship. But what a great location to put a museum to honor this beautiful boat. And again, it is tourism development dollars, which most people in the community think of as free money. It's the money that everybody pays when they come to hotels only. And we're able to utilize some of it for different wonderful things like this purchase. And I think it's important to continue to accentuate that so that people don't think we're spending money that could be used on roads or buildings or other things that. This is only what we can use for things that market tourism. So, thank you, Mr. Coffee, for your hard work on this. It's really been very forward thinking of you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with I. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Your second item?
Second item is very exciting. It's about a new economic project. I'm not going to talk a lot about it. I'm really going to turn this over to the gentleman that worked on it most, is Mr. Nathan Sparks from one Okalosa EDC. Let him talk for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Coffee. Chairman Commissioners, Nathan Sparks, One Okalosa Economic Development Council. It is a real pleasure to be before you today because we're coming with an exciting opportunity. Before I get into that, let me just take you back to twenty eighteen. In twenty eighteen, this board had a vision. And that vision was to create the Shoal River Ranch Gigasite. Some call it the Shoal River Industrial Park. I don't care what you call it. I call it opportunity. So that vision, as you know, took a lot of advanced planning. It took strategic land acquisitions. It took forward-thinking infrastructure investments. And it took the successful pursuit of grant dollars. As you all know, Triumph Gulf Coast was the first entity to step up and extend water and sewer grant funding. So that we could truly unlock the full potential of Shoal River Ranch. So today, we have an opportunity before us, and it is a good one. The opportunity came to us through Florida Commerce. We initially responded to a request for proposal in two thousand three. We responded to a follow-up RFP last spring, so about a year ago. And we got to know this company and the individuals involved over time. They visited our community. We visited them. We were very competitive for this opportunity, and we knew that it was going to take everything we have in terms of creativity to land a very significant opportunity. We've known that all along, but it was also going to take the right property and the right vision. Which we have. There were a dozen states in play at one point, dozens of sites within those, within those individuals, the states. And we've been informed by this company that they have selected Okalosa County, provided that we can put together the right framework for this opportunity to take root. So let me tell you about the opportunity. The opportunity is a confidential project and it will remain so. Until which time they're ready to announce, and that will be coordinated, of course, with the governor's office once all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. But the opportunity is a one million square foot manufacturing complex for critical aircraft systems for both commercial and defense markets. The site that they have identified at the Shoal River Ranch Gigasite is a hundred and thirty five acres. The initial phase, this is a multi-faced project scaling up to one million square feet. The initial phase is two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. That initial phase needs to be completed by December of twenty twenty six. That's right. That's next year. So it's very urgent. The second phase, another two hundred and fifty thousand square feet needs to be completed by the end of twenty twenty eight. And then there is a remaining five hundred thousand square feet to total that one million that I referenced, that would be completed in twenty thirty five, twenty thirty six timeframe. All in, the total investment is one billion forty million eight hundred and nineteen thousand. Making this the single largest economic development project in terms of investment in Northwest Florida's history. So that vision is coming to root. And it's coming to root because of the vision that you all had. Now, in order to get this done. And create, by the way, three hundred and thirty six jobs at sixty nine thousand, three, sixty nine thousand four hundred and thirty four dollars a year, which is a hundred and twenty two percent of our current average wage. Which is currently fifty six thousand eight hundred and forty nine dollars. So very good paying jobs as you would expect. We need to put together the right framework. You heard me reference that. So we have been in discussions with Triumph Gulf Coast. Again, keep in mind Triumph has been a partner in the Shoal River Ranch Gigasite from the start. Triumph Gulf Coast is very interested in being a partner in creating and facilitating higher wage job creation in targeted sectors like aerospace. In Northwest Florida, in the eight counties that they serve. So Triumph Gulf Coast has said, conceptually, based on the framework of this project, they can provide what is their highest award on a per job basis, which is fifty thousand dollars per job. Back to the three hundred and thirty six jobs, that works out to sixteen point eight million dollars potentially from Triumph Gulf Coast. To assist in preparing this site to accommodate this leading manufacturer. Sixteen point eight that can be used for infrastructure, road extensions, access improvements, stormwater, security fencing, parking lots, lighting, publicly owned infrastructure. The site will remain publicly owned, will be back. Before you, provided you choose to move forward today, will be back before you, their future date with a contemplated ground lease. Space Florida will be a participant. You all know the Space Florida benefits. We've discussed those in the past, but that will all come later. What today's agenda item is about is moving forward to the first step of that Triumph Gulf Coast process. If you all choose to move forward today with that Triumph application and the complimentary resolution. The next Triumph meeting is scheduled for April twenty third. That would be when that board hears that first presentation relative to this opportunity. Provided they choose to move forward at that point to term sheet negotiation. A term sheet would be coming back to you for future consideration. So you'll get another bite at the apple. Then ultimately a grant agreement. You know Triumph is a three-step process, but because this project has such a high degree of urgency. And some national security implications as well. Triumph has agreed conceptually that they can combine those last two steps, both the term sheet and the grant agreement in a meeting in June. So at that point, we will hopefully continue down the path and get to that point. We would be at a point where that company knows that if they choose to move forward with this project, they've already pre-selected us. They've already said, we love your community. We like the leadership that we've met. We like the site. We love the workforce development aspects. We love the opportunity to hire. Your military talent that separates from the military that have some transferable skills. All those boxes have been checked, but if we can complete these final pieces of the puzzle, then they will be announcing in concert with the governor's office and breaking ground this summer. So that is what is before you today. I don't know that I've ever been more excited to come before you. But rest assured, it's been an incredible journey. We could not have gotten to this point again without your continued support and leadership.
Thank you. Commissioners. Mr. Ketchel.
First of all, congratulations. I know how hard you've worked to make something happen. And it's been in conjunction with us. And there were times, you know, I've been on this like trade, I mean, Commissioner Goodwin for ten years, eleven years. There's been times when my knees were wobbly about some of the votes on Shoal River. I mean, you want Shoal to work out, but you don't know, and you keep voting and hoping and Craig Coffee kept saying, it'll be fine. So I'm very excited to make the motion for the approval of the resolution and to move forward on the county's Triumph application and to see where this goes. I really hope it happens. Thank you so much for your hard work.
A motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Palmer. Any further discussion, Commissioner Cox?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's been quite a bit and I too have been watching the different opportunities come forward, you know, for Shoal River Ranch and. I, I wanted to lay this out that I, I remember because I was there, you know, the governor gave the three million dollar check to, to get something going out there and. And that's great. And I've certainly fielded a lot of feedback about, you know, what happened, what's ever going to happen or what have you. And just, just to, you know, to. Let everyone publicly know that, you know, in three million dollars investment is a, is a huge gift from the governor's office for that situation, but. In comparison with the one billion dollar opportunity that there may be here, it isn't, it isn't a drop in the bucket. And when I hear that a billion dollar investment. You know, might be made in our county that we love so much, that we're struggling to, to get to our home, you know, to and from our homes, especially on the north end. In that two and a half hour traffic, you know, during our, our peak seasons that we can't, you know, we would, we dare not discourage, right? We love our visitors. We're glad they, they come here and spend their money. But what I hear, when I hear of that kind of investment in our community is that, A, somebody else sees it as a huge opportunity to, as a, as a benefit to them. And B, that we stand to benefit significantly, you know, from the tax dollars alone, from that, that investment will procure for our county and my ability to, you know, I ran on roads and bridges. It's the. It's probably the dullest thing you could run on, but I meant it, and I want to solve the traffic problems. And I know the other commissioners are on board with me in solving our traffic problems on those state-owned roads and highways. And it is absolutely critical that we have partnership dollars to meet them with. You know, the Florida Department of Transportation loves us. They want us to help, they want to help us. But nothing entices them more than those extra tax dollars that we're able to put into something like this. And this particular opportunity just sounds like such a huge blessing in the right direction. So I wish you the best of luck. I mean, you certainly have my vote. Thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's been an awful lot, and I appreciate your aggressively pursuing the meetings necessary to make this go forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Sparks, I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done on this. I echo your excitement. I'm very excited about this opportunity. This economic development on the North End is going to help alleviate some of the pressure on our roads and bridges as we build that on the North End. And I just, I'm so excited about this to have a billion-dollar investment. And I know this isn't the first domino to fall, but I think it's one of the biggest to fall to start that, you know, that waterfall of what can really be happening at Shoal River Ranch. So I thank you for your work on this. I'm excited about enthusiastically supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodwin?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Nathan, you and I have been looking at this property for a long time. I remember when you took me out there and we rode around and kind of looked at it. I think it was maybe before most of it gotten put into a conservation easement, but there's some, you know, strategic thinking and relationships. We're still able to, you know, preserve a significant amount with the opportunity for industrial growth. I know you were leading the idea of, you know, getting this rezoned, what probably, you know, almost a decade ago, to get industrial, to get an industrial designation there, kind of looking forward to the future. And I know it's a long, it's been a long-term plan. But of course, anything of this significance is going to take long-term planning. There's no quick deal. And so, you know, I appreciate your efforts over time. And so I certainly support it. I mean, I think you and I, and probably Commissioner Ketchel and the others will be out there, you know, digging the trenches for the footers as soon as they're ready. We want to get it done. But that said, a couple of things, and if you spoke to us already, I apologize, but I do think it's important because of the distinction and what we're being asked to do, what I think we're going to agree to do today. And that is to be the applicant to Triumph Gulf Coast as the county, not the private company. The county will be the applicant for $16.8 million, which is a pretty big lift. And so I just want to be clear for our constituents, because you and I have had this discussion, and I understand it clear now how this works, but I do think it's important because, you know, it's a big ask for the county to take on 16.8 million. And so I think that, you know, our citizens probably deserve to know what, you know, what kind of risk is a tenuity with that. Well, as I understand it, under the old framework with a Triumph application, you know, it needed to be somebody in government to be the applicant, so we would be in this case. But of course Triumph had these clawbacks if the milestones weren't met, the job creation, the timing and so forth. But as I understand it, that those requirements have been either revised or amended to further limit what that exposure to the county would be. So as I understand it, we vote yes, and, you know, good Lord forbid, something happens and the project doesn't come forward. The county doesn't just have to turn around and write a $16.8 million check to Triumph, correct?
That's correct.
So can you explain what the county would be at risk for, just so we can compare that risk versus the upside? Because when you and I talked, I think when you do the risk versus reward analysis, it's very much worth moving forward, and the risk is minimal compared to the potential reward. But just so that our constituents can understand that.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that clarifying question. You're absolutely correct. So when there is a company on the other end of a deal, such as there is in this case, where public infrastructure is being invested in and supported through Triumph Gulf Coast to benefit private sector job creation, you all are, of course, the applicant. But the performance guarantee, which is a document that accompanies the term sheet negotiation process and ultimately the term sheet, and then the grant award agreement, that performance guarantee, which stipulates the clawback provisions relative to the job creation that's being committed, back to that 336 job factor, that is between the company and Triumph Gulf Coast. And so the company is essentially, for lack of a better phrase, on the hook for the job creation. If they don't, and they have to, you know, show performance, obviously, like any major project, those jobs are going to be phased over time. I think by year two, or excuse me, year four, they're scaled up to 210 jobs, and they'll continue to scale from there. But if they don't, for whatever reason, whatever external factors or internal factors, if they don't create the jobs that they're committing to create, and they're on the hook for paying back a proportionate share of that of that grant award agreement, and that performance guarantee spells that out. Where the exposure lies, and it's much less than the 16.8, is if, in fact, the company goes away. This is, by the way, this is a decades-old company, an American manufacturer, privately-owned, very strong financial profile, been evaluated by Space Florida, been evaluated by numerous parties within the state to provide, you know, support from the state. So we feel very good about them, but we know that things can change, right? And so you all, in your capacity, have to think about worst-case scenario, so I appreciate that. And worst-case scenario, if the company becomes insolvent, no longer exists, what have you, then Triumph and the county would partner in the pursuit of those dollars from the company. We would be on the hook, you would be on the hook for a 50% share of legal expenses to pursue the company. That's how these agreements are now written.
Okay, so I appreciate that, because I think that makes the risk much more tolerable. And just pointing out, we're not really pledging the full faith and credit of the county for this 16.8 million. We've got a much smaller risk, and that's reduced to that 50% cost share on legal. And that's if there's even a breach, which there may not be, or even if there was a breach, the company may choose to cure or settle that. So I think it's a real small risk that we end up out of pocket on this to some significant amount that makes it detrimental to the county. So I appreciate that. I think that, you know, with that clarification, and I'll be honest with you, with Triumph projects in general, where we have a private sector partner or another partner that's not county, I've always been concerned about that clawback and what that meant, because we are fiduciaries of the resources of our citizens. And so protecting those is very important. So I just appreciate you pointing that out, and I just, I don't want it to be seen as that we just, you know, take this too lightly or we're too excited to think about the details. I know you've spent time with every commissioner. You know, you and I spent probably an hour and a half at least digging through the details of this, if not more. And so I just want to point that out for our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan, this is exciting times. Glad to see it progressing forward.
Sure.
We did math in a meeting with one of the power providers a few weeks ago and came to nearly $100 million that's invested in these efforts. And that's a lot for a county and the state in partnership to come forward. Yeah, I would encourage my fellow commissioners, if you have not driven out there recently, it's looking entirely different. The roads are going down. There's some asphalt on the ground. It's really beginning to take shape into the vision that was casted. I remember a few years ago when we loaded Secretary Kelly in my truck, and we went legitimate four-wheeling through the ranch to go cast the vision. It's great to see things like this, to know that he retained that and has utilized it to help our favor in the future. So excited to see all of the partnerships that are coming together for this to continue to take shape. There's no additional comments. It's all in favor? Signify with a I. Any opposed? It passes unanimously.
Mr. Hofstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as you know, several of us, I believe three commissioners, three or four staff, took a trip to Tallahassee. We were asked to visit with our legislative contingent as part of the Florida Association of Counties Legislative Days. Yeah, it's kind of a mixed message coming out of Tallahassee. I'll tell you that there's some concern from a market volatility perspective going forward here over the next several months, how that's going to impact all of us, both nationally and locally. And there's also concern about what we'll see from an appropriation standpoint. Some of that, some of the feedback we're getting is appropriations are going to be limited this year. And there was also considerable discussion on the efficiencies and inefficiencies of local government. And as part of that, the chairman has crafted a letter sent to me. All of you have been copied on that letter, requesting the board take action to do a deeper dive into our audit and our expenses and revenues here in Okaloosa County. And at the same time, it says that's an ongoing effort to, let's dial back and limit hiring of nonessential general fund positions during the time of that engagement. So I have reached out to Warren Abert, our auditor. You will have a presentation from Warren Abert at your next meeting. I will tell you, as many of you know, commissioners that have been on this dais for several years along with me, we've made great strides in our financial stewardship here in Okaloosa County. Considering where we are today versus where we were 10 years ago, limited general fund reserves, our general fund reserves were less than $9 million for, you know, half a billion-dollar budget. You know, we have taken steps both internally through my office and our department heads and our presentation to the BCC each year as part of our budget process to try and preserve some of our general fund dollars to build that reserve. We've built that reserve over $35 million in that period of time. Also during that period of time, we've increased our bond rating to AA+. And I will tell you, there are very few local governments across this country that have a AAA bond rating, and we're right on the verge of that. So that's showing the investors in the bond market that we manage our finances well. We pay our debts, and we're looking toward the future and what we do. So I am confident from the administrator's perspective that we're doing the right things. You know, there was a dark time in this country or this county's history about 14 years ago that forced us to be under the microscope from the state with the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee. They were camped out here and poring over our policies and procedures. And along with our legal counsel and our legal team, made significant changes to those purchasing policies and procedures to ensure that we're spending the public's dollars wisely. And we pay considerable attention to that. We've also, during that time period, we have rebuilt our staff capacity, you know, post-recession in the 2007, 2008 timeframe, like many governments throughout the country, we reduced a lot of positions. We cut out over 100 positions here within the BCC. And what we found out is some of those positions, we could not sacrifice. That was some of our internal controls and our financial oversight. So we worked very hard during the last decade to rebuild that staff capacity, make sure we have the internal oversight on our finances. So I feel very confident that, you know, the data will show that we're spending our tax dollars wisely. During the same period of time, we've maintained one of the lowest millage rates in the state at 3.83 mils. Very few county agencies have a millage rate below four, an aggregate millage rate below four, and we're one of those counties. So while I'm confident, this is a step that we can take. Again, I have engaged our auditors. They have an idea of what we're looking at. So I'm looking for a scope of work and a price for that engagement. At the same time, I've had a talk with our clerk, you know, as this board knows, the clerk of court instituted a inspector general office about the same time I took this seat 10 years ago. And that function has been a good partner to Okaloosa County in reviewing each of our departments here within the BCC, looking at BCC finances. I think, Brad, that, you know, the plan is to go through all departments within a two-year period and provide those summaries back to my office and to the BCC. And in doing so, they give us their thoughts on how we can further gain efficiencies within our BCC finances. And the bulk of that we take and we implement, and it's made us a stronger organization because of that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I know it's your letter. I'm not speaking on your behalf. I'm just letting you know from your administrator's perspective what I see and what I believe. And certainly, if it's the board's desire, we absolutely will go through that exercise and report back to the board. With that, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, hopefully you've had time to take a look at that and ask any questions. Mr. Hofstadter, thank you for that explanation, Mr. Hofstadter. Love to see if there's any desire to move forward. Commissioner Ketchel?
I'm good with moving forward. The frustration I have is that, well, the state government and the county governments are required to have a balanced budget. We have really lived within our means. In the last 10 years, there has been no fluff in this county. I'll stake my reputation on that. And this irritates the tar out of me, to be honest with you. I think it's wonderful what Trump's doing. I think it's great that they're finding all this abuse and waste, because they have not lived within their means on the federal level. Not by any means. They have not balanced the budget since Clinton was in office. When I worked on Capitol Hill, we had to have a balanced budget. Was there waste then? You bet there was. But we still had to have a balanced budget. But it really bothers me that our state legislators are looking, as well as our governor, at the counties as a way to maybe finance revenues. So yeah, I'm all about, go ahead, do this audit, put it at the governor's doorstep to show him that at least one county of 67, because I can't speak for the other 66, although I do see that Walton County is doing this and some of the other more conservative counties are living within their means. At least we are. So I'm all about this audit. I think that was a smart move on your part. So I'll make the motion if you'd like me to. But I just had to say that because I am so frustrated. I've talked to all of our senators. I've talked, well, I didn't talk to Trump yet. I've talked to state legislators. I'm very frustrated by this whole thing that's happening, because they're looking at us like perhaps there's fluff in our budget, and there's not. But an audit will prove that, so I'm willing to go forward.
I'll second. Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Palmer. Commissioner Goodwin?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to jump in front of Commissioner Ketchel.
I'll go after you. That's fine. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. I just want to say that, you know, I understand the bristling at this, you know, you know, having to deal with this issue in this way. But I welcome the opportunity to demonstrate that Okaloosa County is conservative and that we are good fiduciaries of the public money. So although I do understand that, I do want to make sure that, you know, as we move forward with this, this is not a reflection on how we feel about staff, except that it should be looked at as an opportunity for us to demonstrate how good of a job that our staff in our county does in this sort of environment. So I just wanted, I do understand the, you know, the expression of, you know, not enjoying the challenge. But I do appreciate the opportunity for us to demonstrate how good we actually are. So thank you.
I just want to say, the reason I feel this strongly, and you probably don't, is that Commissioner Goodwin and I have sat here and done this, and we know. So, but it's kind of a pride of authorship, I think. So that's the reason.
Commissioner Goodwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, you know, and I did read your letter and had the opportunity to speak with the administrator and council as well just about kind of what the concepts were. I think, you know, it is, I think it is going in the right direction, so I'm in support. Obviously, this is my opportunity to kind of share my thoughts and get some clarifying questions kind of on the table because of the sunshine and so forth, and so on, and I have these other opportunities. You know, for me, I kind of, you know, look at it maybe not necessarily as a fraud, waste, and abuse audit, because I think we do that already. And I feel like, you know, look, when, you know, there used to be a time when that was a serious problem in Okaloosa County. And we've done a real good job, I think, under our current leadership of flushing that out and getting rid of those bad elements. But that doesn't mean that there aren't efficiencies that can be appreciated by looking at our practices, our policies, our procedures, the tools that we have available for our employees to do their jobs, you know, whether that's, you know, leveraging technology or doing things in a more streamlined fashion that saves staff time and then in turn save that, that saves staff time and then in turn save, save time and resources for our, our constituents. So again, you know, I, my hope is, is that it helps, you know, move that, that concept along of finding ways that we can save money. Because again, I'm not sure that we're as much looking for fluff in the budget as we are looking for ways of being more innovative about the way we approach things. And I think there's always opportunity to be more, to look for innovation and ways to do things more efficiently. We are conservative, but you know, we're not foolish, right? I mean, somebody may, you know, stand on their front porch and claim, I've never replaced my roof or spent a dime on it. I'm conservative. Well, that's foolish, right? But being responsible about how you make those expenditures is something I think this county has really strived to pride itself upon over the past, you know, decade or so. And I think we've come a long way in doing that. And so I, I think it's a, a great opportunity to do that. How that's done would be the second part of my, I guess, comments or questions, whether or not that's through an accounting style audit, which certainly has its place and can be helpful. But I do, you know, I am appreciative of the fact that, that Warren Abert and Angela Ballen go to great measures to, to, to go through our audit every year. And of course, you know, accountants don't necessarily take that approach for the purposes of streamlining processes and procedures because they wouldn't understand necessarily all the subject matter necessities of each of the different departments. What they look for is sets of parameters or rules, and then they can tell you if those have been violated, which can be signals for, if you're looking for something that's, that's either an inappropriate expenditure or a concern or something like that. I'm wondering, is there an opportunity to try to leverage a different type of talent in here in this process where we could really focus it mostly on efficiencies? And, and honestly, I'd love to get, I'd love to get back, obviously, a confirmation that we got a clean bill of health on fraud, waste or abuse that, that we're, that we're in the clear. But I'd also love to get back an action plan of things we can do that would help, you know, help reduce costs and create more efficiency. And efficiency can be, can be both time and money, right? And I think the time factor is really helpful, you know, not just intergovernment, but also with our constituents. So again, I don't know if, if, if I'm thinking of it in a different light of, of where it really may or may not go and how that might be done. But those were kind of my thoughts when I read this, that it, it really opened the door for an excellent opportunity to accomplish some of those things. So I'm, I'm definitely in support of, of moving forward.
Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Chairman. So when I heard about this from the ruling out of the governor's office, my, my me to get thoughts, we're not concerned really for our county because I have watched frankly, our county go through those difficult times to now. And I have no question, especially after having, you know, gone through some of the offices and department heads and that, and seeing really what a well-oiled machine it is and of what tight controls we have. Thank goodness that some of those even prevent us from making spending errors and mistakes. But I, I, I thought maybe to myself that it isn't so much an act of disciplinarian, you know, to, to ask for these audits, but rather stewardship and, you know, gathering what each county is doing and at a time that is, for, to compare best practices. And frankly, at a time when maybe, maybe we need it, not, we don't specifically Okaloosa County necessarily need, you know, revision or, you know, maybe we do, but, but, but really I didn't think it's so much the governor trying to drill down on what, you know, inefficiencies we have as much as maybe we could share our best practices or he could share our best practices with other counties who may be struggling with those, you know, operational inefficiencies or, or what have you. When I think about, you know, the fact that we will definitely, and the governor has been working very closely with CFO Patronas for some time now, we know what an asset we have had in him. As a state, we, we realize that he has had very tight controls. He's, he has uncovered millions of dollars of, of missing money, you know, for our citizens and whatnot. And, and it, it to me is a, a bright beacon of stewardship for our governor to say, okay, during this time when we realize that this man has left this position, you know, to, to groom himself for Congress, we hope. I think most of us expect that, that, that may be the case, that, that it's going to take some time for the new, you know, person, just as it does for myself and for Commissioner Palmer, to graft into the fold, that it's probably not a bad idea for us to share our best practices with other counties who may be struggling, you know, with that or might be struggling with a member or two who aren't quite on board with, you know, keeping those tight controls into play, in place and, and moving forward. And I, I, I think of, of this and I, I feel, I feel and hearken to your sentiments, Commissioner Ketchel, because I was here, you know, to, not on the, behind the dais, but I've lived in this county a very long time. And I remember those difficult days and how, when, what a bad light it shed on everyone, you know, really countywide. When one person, or just a few people, you know, take some missteps that color everyone else badly. But I think of this, that because you've gone through that and Commissioner Goodwin, you too have gone through the, the reconciliatory, reconciliatory period following that and the protocols. And, and thank you, Administrator Hofstadter, for having gone through that with us and seen us through that. I think of, of this, and I'll leave you with these words that I think of very, very often when, you know, I'm under the fire for something that, that I didn't even, you know, vote on or what have you, that you were made for such a time as this, right? I think that our county and what we've been through has purified us, you know, from a protocols and, and auditing standpoint. And I think that maybe, you know, we could be used as a light for, for others to follow. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Palmer?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I, I do appreciate, you know, the other commissioners' take on this as well. And, you know, as a, in my other life, as a practitioner of lean and six sigma continuous improvement, I think this is an opportunity for us to look at the processes and see where we can improve efficiencies and things like that. I think we saw a little bit of that this morning as well, though. I think we already do have that culture in the county. Obviously, you can always improve. There's always room for improvement. But I, I think we saw that this morning when we were talking about refinancing the bonds. You know, you've got two different departments that got together and said, hey, we can save some money. We can be efficient by the way that we handle this as well. So I appreciate the, the discussion on this. I, I do, and I agree that there's always ways to do that. But I just want to make sure that, you know, in this, that is not the intent of this board to, to, to join in that finger pointing, right? Because I don't think that we have a glaring problem. There's always efficiencies we can gain, but I don't think that we have a glaring problem. Thank you.
Mr. Hofstadter?
Commissioners, and thank you for the feedback. And, you know, to, to your point, we're, we're certainly not asking our auditors to duplicate an audit. The audit's done and you will have those findings in, in two weeks. And I believe every one of you will be pleased with our progress here in Okaloosa County. In my discussions with Warren Abert, we're more looking at over a period of time and what we've done from a financial management perspective over that period of time to better posture this county going forward. I, I think from a pure policy and procedure perspective, I think you're going to get valuable insight from Mr. Embry and the clerk of court and their IG team. They're the ones that do the deep dive into all of these departments. You're not going to get that from our auditors. They're looking big picture countywide and, and all of our, our finances from a countywide perspective. Whereas the engagements we get out of the clerk's IG office are specific to a department. Heck, they do surprise cash counts on some of our cash operations here in, in the county, and they do that annually. So that, there's where you get the feedback from a policy and procedure perspective of, of different policies we could implement to make us more efficient going forward. And I certainly don't want to speak for you, Mr. Clerk, but I know that's part of the conversation you and I have had.
Yes, Mr. Clerk.
So the comptroller role is something that we take very seriously. We, we have a very robust inspector general's office that does an annual risk or that does a risk assessment every two years on even years currently. And then on odd years, they reevaluate that, they develop a work plan and how they're going to approach the county and things that they want to look at, and it's all risk-based. In addition to that, we have a very robust finance department that is looking through every single transaction that runs through our office. Last fiscal year, we had north of 47,000 transactions that ran through our finance department. Every one of those are prepayment, they're, they conduct prepayment audits to make sure that there's a public purpose, that the money is being spent in accordance with a contract or a policy or even statute. And so I'm looking forward to the scrutiny. You know, we, we talk about transparency and accountability. And the best way to be accountable is to be transparent. And so I'm looking forward to the scrutiny. I'm looking forward to the partnership with the county and making sure that, you know, we're doing everything that we can to be good stewards of, of the taxpayers' money. So thank you for the time.
When Clerk Peacock started the inspector general's office and he pulled the, the old goat to come lead it, it's, it's an honor to have you as our clerk now, since you stood that up and, and created a lot of these processes that really helped us be where we are today.
Yeah, so I've, I've been here a little more than 10 years now, obviously. And the first eight of that was spent on the comptroller side in the inspector general's office. I'm very proud of our office. Our IG is sitting in the audience today, Renee Larky. And, but I just want to assure you that this is going to be a partnership and, and that, and we'll do anything that we can from the IG standpoint to help you with this evaluation or this process as we move through it.
Thank you. All in favor, sing for the aye?
Aye.
You opposed, and it passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, before you open the public comment meeting, if, if, I've had something come up where I'm going to have to step out a little early. I'd like to sit through the public comments, but I'd like to yield my commissioner minute back to the chair and I'll have to excuse myself if that's okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. One speaker card for public comment. Gil Fortner.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank y'all for the opportunity to come before you again. I love Okaloosa County. I was, spent my entire life here. My mom was born in Baker almost 100 years ago, left her entire life here. Every time I come to a county commissioner meeting, and I'll go ahead and tell you, we're leading up to bringing up the Inspire Study again. But every time I come to the county commissioner meeting, I hear about exciting new opportunities that our county is looking at. And those exciting new opportunities revolve around additional growth for our county. Each one of the meetings I don't hear where we have any time dedicated to how we are going to address that future growth. The Inspire Study kind of gave us some, some roadmaps of how to get there. It's been almost six months since the study was completed. We keep kicking the can down the road. During this time, developers are purchasing additional property and making plans, buying additional farmland that we as a county should be looking and making plans of how we're going to protect that before a developer purchases it and decides they're going to turn farmland into a new development because that's, you know, what they do. I would just say, I would like to see our county have discussions each time we meet about growth plans, how we're going to address the citizens' needs versus the developer needs. Right now, it seems that every time I come to a meeting, we see where, it seems to me that the developer needs are driving what's occurring in our county. And our citizens just don't seem to have enough input in that. I said, we don't discuss that at the county commission meetings. And I would like to encourage y'all to do that. Our county is a wonderful place to live. You can imagine in my 69 years how things have changed. I can't imagine and what things are going to be like in just another 10 years. And I think back to the days when my mom, who's been gone five and a half years, we had to take her car keys away from her because it wasn't safe for her to go to town anymore. In 10 years, where am I going to be in that situation? Will I be able to get in a car and drive to the store to buy groceries and live my life? And I would just say, let's look if they can supply us that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. It's time one of the commissioners minute, Commissioner Palmer.
I just want to say, I, I really appreciate the, every meeting when we open up and we start with just appreciating the most valuable asset that we have as a county, the employees. I want to say, I, you know, I just want to thank you guys for all of the work that you do. Again, talking about the efficiencies that, that we see just in, in some of the strategies that you use to address the issues that you are dealing with day to day. And, you know, we, we overcame policy to do the naming after Ms. Dunning. And I, I just, I think that speaks volumes about how much we really do appreciate the contributions that, that our employees give to the county. And so I just wanted to end with that, on that, on that note. I'm, I'm humbled to be a part of this board that does appreciate the, the employees of this county that serve our people so well. Thank you.
Commissioner Ketchel?
So just to want to remind everybody in Okaloosa County to go vote today or everywhere on the panhandle. This is a very important election. We want to keep the House. You've got to have all the Republican congressional candidates. I'm most concerned about the Daytona race, but that's not our concern. We can't do anything about that. Today's April 1st, and I'm not kidding, today is Sherri Cox's birthday. So I want to wish her a happy birthday.
Couple of things, want to share with you all that I went to the governor and cabinet meeting in Tallahassee and was extremely delighted to see within their agenda packet the continuous efforts to purchase development rights on some farmland in Okaloosa County. I'll, I'll remind you that to make any purchase, it takes a willing seller. And so we, we see things about, about farmlands moving and, and becoming something else. It's, it's not that, it, it's by choice. But there's also the element that is making choices to say, we want to keep this conserved, preserved. And so, so it was great to see a, a lot of acreage listed within Florida Forever and, and some other avenues of preserving some of the, some of the farmlands. So that was exciting to see in the cabinet meeting. The second thing is, I've had a couple of folks reach out and say, we really need to stop. You know, folks reach out with all kinds of things, but, but this one is like some, just a, a matter of education. Need to stop giving so much TDD money to marketing. And I, I giggled at that the first time it was said because we have changed how much TDD money we give to marketing at the, some TDD staff kicking and screaming to, to learn of that, but, but to move in a direction closer to the 40%. But at the same time, we're required to give 40%. And, and really the way that tourist development has shifted to less people spending more money is really showing favorably over the last few years. And so I'm thankful for the staff that we have in tourist development. And I'm thankful that we've made it to the, the 40% mark and, and that we continue to work in those efforts and to see, to see the great things coming. Today, buying 1.83 acres on the water, waterfront property is not being made anymore. It's a, a great spot for the need that we have, the partnership to know. It was hinted to, but not necessarily spoken, tourism dollars is what really is improving the park next door. So taking that whole footprint, wow, what we will have to offer to folks that come to visit and folks that are already here. So I'm just thankful for some of those processes, Ms. Adams, for the way that we are operating local government and that we're doing it very, very efficiently. Commissioner Cox?
I wasn't going to update with too, too much other than our collective. I um, wasn't going to update with too, too much other than our uh, collective trip to the legislature. And um, what an adventure it was to endure that as a even temporarily handicapped person. So uh, between uh, my, my colleagues and my children and myself, who all were uh, present for that. So I have committed to trying to influence the legislature to do something to make Tallahassee um, our, our state's capital more accessible to temporarily or permanently handicapped individuals. It was, uh, it was quite an education. I'll just put that right there. Um, and leave it. And the rest is um, to thank my fellow commissioners who attended and Mr. Hofstadt and Ms. Sheila Fitzgerald for tolerating that. It was um, a- a- as I say, it was an education um, that I probably would not have visited upon them as my colleagues if I had known ahead of time that there were not the accommodations there needed to be. Um, in addition, I wanted to say, um, because Commissioner Mickson's comments um, heartened me to this, that I'm not sure that, that the general public knows that the TDD was initially a voluntary tax imposed by the hoteliers themselves in order to procure collective advertising. So that was its intent in the, in the beginning, from its very onset. Um, and I was surprised to learn that myself. You know, I've, I've built hotels and I didn't know that ahead of time. So I just thought that I would share that because the reason for that giggle was probably not, you know, in, in pure jest, but rather the irony of the, of the request itself is that that was the original um, request of the, of the TDT dollars. The TDT dollars were put together by hoteliers themselves. You know, as a means of collectively advertising in their area, for example, like Visit Florida or Visit Okaloosa or Visit South Walton, what have you. And, and I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. Not to prolong the, the meeting, but to show honor where due, our tax collector is with us. Mr. Anderson, if you have a minute that you would like to share anything, I'll give you the mic at this time.
Uh, just what the audience does not want is another politician speaking, I'm sure. But um, yes, we're pleased to tell you that here on April 1st, we have completed our tax season uh, that which runs officially from November through March 31st. And we're now in this period of final collections. Uh, we're well prepared for that. We'll go through this month of April. On May 10th, we'll start advertising for the property tax certificate sale. And that will help us collect the last of the taxes that haven't been collected this year. I always refer to that as neighbors paying their neighbors' taxes in the opportunity that they will earn money. But the most significant part of that is that, I wanna share it back this way, is that the state has really developed probably the best tax certificate system in the state, in the country, rather. But it's for the funding, and we're able to collect all of our taxes on behalf of our citizens but to support and fund our governments. There are 28 uh, government entities that will receive their money. Uh, Mr. Gordon is here with me. He's in charge of our tax collection department. And last year, out of the 350-plus million dollars that we had in the county that we collect on behalf of the operating governments, we collected all but about $1,400. And so we're able to identify, we have systems in place that work. And just as you mentioned today, when you had to do a homestead foreclosure, the last thing we ever want to see is a property owner lose their property. So we have a very fair system. It stretches out two years to give an owner a chance to regain their footing. So tax collection for '24 is going very well. We're in this final phase, and on June 1st, we'll have collected all that can be collected. And we're pleased to share back to you how much we're just short on that, but we, again, always know where it is. So we'll work on your behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Uh, at this time, it's um, nearly 10:40. We will break until 10:50. We'll reconvene in the conference room for the executive session portion of the meeting, which will be closed to the public. Ms. Oshahara?
Yes. Thank, oh, thank you. For the record, uh, we are, Special Aviation Council and I are seeking advice and direction from the board concerning pending litigation in the matter of Robert V. Smith, the Okaloosa County FAA docket number 162401. In attendance will be the four commissioners, county administrator, myself, Eric Pilsk, Adam Gerchek, and a certified court reporter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, we are back together.
I'd like to make a motion to appeal the FAA decision to the next level.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion by Commissioner Palmer, a second by Commissioner Ketchel. Is there further discussion? All in favor signify with a "aye".
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. So, Shohar, do you have any other items?
Thank you very much.
Meeting is adjourned.